I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. Parker, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, thanks for asking. The claims were updated today as well as we pulled the mini marauders beginnings. We still have a little bit more work before we bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Kelly.
I'll second.
Second by Megan. Any questions about tonight's agenda? All in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Do we have any public comments? No, no one signed in. Well, thank you to all of our principals for continuing their evening with us. Dr. Parker, we'll continue with our reports.
Thank you much. And first up is our Director of Community Relations, Maria Bond, for her good news report.
Good evening. We definitely have some wonderful news to share with you. Wanted to share that Mount Vernon High School student Tate Cogill has qualified for the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, which is a distinction earned by less than 1% of graduating seniors in the United States. So now he will move on to the 16,000 semifinalists and compete with them regarding their top scores for their PSAT and National Merit Scholarship qualifying tests. Also wanted to share, Mount Vernon's homecoming was a spirited week across all schools, each hosting their own themed spirit days leading up to the festivities. The high school highlights included a pep rally, games, powder puff football, pickleball, and knockout tournaments, as well as spirit competitions. The celebration culminated under the Friday Night Lights with marauder football, performances by the band, choir, gold intensity dance team, and cheerleaders. In addition, Sierra Holverson and Brady Weber were crowned homecoming queen and king, and the Marauders Athletic Club donated $25,000 to the Mount Vernon Athletics. Mount Vernon received a $92,500 grant from the state's Secured School Safety Grant Program, which supports the salaries and benefits of the SROs in our district. Also wanted to share that our high school Voice students, and Voice is a club that is focused on promoting healthy choices and preventing tobacco and vape use. They recently visited the middle school seventh grade PE classes to encourage smart decision-making and also invite students to join the club. The high school hosted its third annual Club Rush Week, as well as their College and Career Fair. So between the two of those, it gives the students the chance to explore a variety of clubs and connect with nearly 40 colleges, university businesses, and organizations. So these events provided valuable opportunities for the students to discover interests, build connections, and prepare for their futures. High school girls golf finished fifth in regionals, shooting at 350, but wanted to share freshman Ressie Lemon achieved all-state honors, and she placed 10th at the state girls' golf tournament. So this is the highest individual finish in Mount Vernon history. Both McCordsville Elementary and Mount Comfort Elementary met their fun run fundraising goal, which meant that Principal Miller and Assistant Principal Edwards both had to kiss a pig. And Principal Turner and Assistant Principal Woods, along with 15 other teachers, turned into human sundaes, courtesy of the kids. And I also wanted to share that be sure to follow the school's social media, because they're really doing a great job sharing some of the engaging, hands-on learning activities that I'm not highlighting here. But a couple of the ones that I've seen highlighted are Apple Day with a student-run apple farm stand, Tuttle's field trips, fourth grade and kindergarten students teamed up as book buddies, Grandparents' Day. There's really some great showcases of what all the great things going on in their schools. Under Community Connections, wanted to share that we hosted a powerful event here. We featured lots of visual storytelling with numerous photos demonstrating academic excellence to highlight how the district prepares students for success beyond graduation when we hosted the Hancock County Chamber Luncheon that featured Governor Braun. During the event, Dr. Parker presented on the district's growth and shared several key celebrations. So we had more than 100 community members here. Also wanted to share that the foundation and Mount Vernon are partnering to host the first annual Mount Vernon Turkey Trot Miles for Meals 5K on November 22nd, and it will be at Landmark Park in Fortville. So this fun run walk will raise funds for the Mount Vernon Education Foundation Angel Fund, which helps cover student meal debt and supports local families in need with their meals. Mount Comfort Elementary had a really fun family fun night. Indy 11 mascot and players came, and they had all sorts of activities, book fair and games for the kids, so it was a lot of fun. The Vernon Township Fire Department also had a busy week connecting with our schools. An FES student and parent enjoyed a special ride to school in Fire Engine, including a tour of the fire station. And Station 432 also joined McCordsville's fourth graders for their annual Egg Drop Project, assisting with testing and celebrating the students' creativity. And then last but not least, wanted to share that we were featured in the National Association for School University Partnerships. It's the NASUP Association. We are featured on their website regarding the partnership that we have with Ball State of the 36 Ball State teaching students that worked alongside our teachers in two of our elementary schools. So there is more in your packet as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next report is coming from our principal of Mount Vernon Intermediate School, Ms. Ashley Guston. She'll take a minute to plug Ben in.
You promise? It's green? Okay, here it's right, it works. All right. Thankful to be here. It's been a really great start to the school year. Reopening the intermediate has been quite the adventure. I won't say it's been seamless, but it's been pretty smooth. So we'll start with student learning and what we're doing at the intermediate. We set our school improvement goals. We're looking for a slow and steady, sustainable growth. My picture is not popping up, Steph. I don't know. I'm not sure why my picture is not in there. But we're looking at fifth and sixth grade passing at 45%. That's 3% greater than what they were last year. Oh, there it is. Okay. And then in mathematics, the committee decided at 3% as well. That'd be fifth grade passing at 58%, and sixth grade at 48%. How we are monitoring that, the district uses the IPS sheet to track their essential learnings. We know that we need to catch students before they take that CFA. Part of the district's strategic plan is for teachers to be tracking interim data before students take their common assessment. So I worked with my teacher leadership team and gave them the autonomy to kind of decide what does that look like. I have two examples of that from teachers. They're using a color-coded system in fifth grade English, so they're tracking their students. And then off to the side, you can see where they're pulling those students. They're dating that for intervention. The other is a sixth grade science example. Those are small checkpoints before they take their CFA. They're color-coded, and then they have data based on their class period to pull those kids for a Tier Two intervention. Students are also tracking their own data. In fifth grade, they're doing In Charge of My Growth, and they're tracking a pre-assessment, a first data check, a second data check, and those ideally should predict how they do on their CFA. Another teacher team has broken their skills individually at the bottom, and they have their students tracking their data in that way. Students are also tracking NWA and setting goals for the semester. This is a sixth grade science. They're doing quick data checks that students are filling in, and then they're setting goals based on those quick points. The second strategic plan goal that we're focused on was sense of belonging. That was really important, opening a new building, making sure that staff and students felt at home. Mr. Clarkson worked really hard on creating a TBRI tracker. We did that at the very beginning of the school year. Teachers went through, and they wrote something that they knew about their student, and then they ranked a 1, 2, 3, or 4. A 1 meaning they know the student's name, but they don't really have a connection, and a 4 that they have a very strong connection with students. That student would seek them out for support. We're going to do that four times a year. It looks like this. So teacher team two here, was it a 74%? Three was at a 45. We hope to see that these grow as the year progresses, and this is teacher teams one through six in sixth grade. Things that we've done across the building for a sense of belonging. The behavior techs are working on those behavioral needs. They're collecting data, they're running small groups, and we're working in our in-school restitution room on it, on some restorative practices. Our instructional specialists are meeting with math and reading students, and this week, we're kicking off our RTI meetings, making sure that we're meeting the right students to meet those academic needs. And social-emotional, the guidance counselor has her tutoring sessions up and running, and she's also doing instructional support groups as a Tier Two for teachers. Parent-teacher connection day was, by and large, a huge success. We had over 90% of our families turn out. The slots were all full. We had our first back-to-school bash. We had 323 students stay for that dance after school, so that was well-attended. Second steps nurture group, our OT time is working. We have house meetings and buddy classroom meetings to build a strong sense of community across our student groups. And then our athletics are off the ground with some tryouts coming. And then we have art club is very well-attended, as well as student council is getting off the ground, too. One item that we talk about, and we do a black and gold bulletin from administration every Friday. We put the strategic plan goals, and we underline which goal we're addressing. As of recently, we've been giving mini PD for teachers, and we just address like, how do we build a sense of belonging in our building? Mr. Clarkson and myself drop in quick notes for teachers just to develop some capacity. Building culture and climate this year, like I said, was really important. We were lucky enough to take our staff over the summer. We'd done some work in February about what did it mean to be a well-run intermediate building. We read some articles. We teased out what are those traits? What are things that we should be looking for? We did some work over the summer for a staff retreat, and our staff members came up with these five words that we use to hold each other accountable in our building: respect, collaboration, integrity, accountability, and community. Other things that we're doing for staff retention, we have new teacher mentors. We serve them lunch the first few days of school, and Mr. Clarkson and I have regular check-ins. We have a leadership team that has ongoing building discussions that we're reflecting on the operations of the building, making minor changes as we can, and then making sure that merging all four buildings with teachers from each building, that our PLCs are true to what Mount Vernon is looking for. Because all of our processes are new, we are hosting. Mr. Clarkson and I do mini PD sessions before school, so talk to us about the step tracker for behaviors or help us with Canvas. And then once a month, we do kind of like a Ted Lasso Biscuits with the Boss. We've done a breakfast where we just invite our staff in, ask questions, and just to build a sense of community. And then our PTO is fantastic. From year one, I've not seen a PTO run as well as what I've seen so far at the intermediate. And then teacher teams also devise some calendars just to create some fun things for our teachers throughout the month. That's it.
Questions? You're off to a great start.
Thank you. It's been so much fun, so fun.
Thank you. All right. This time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have our regular session minutes from September 8th. We have personnel report, claims, construction claims, construction change orders, monthly fund transfers, overnight field trip requests, donation approvals from Nine Star MV Athletic Boosters and the Tech Point Foundation for Youth, and destruction of records. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion by Megan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any questions about the agenda or consent agenda? Consent items, I should say, not agenda. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Elkins.
So our first action item tonight, ask the board for consideration and approval of our 2026 budget resolution. It's the fourth straight month we've done something with the budget. I see this gentleman, I don't have a lot to say. We know that those are the numbers that we have to do to get the budget that we really want, and we shared what those really want numbers are a couple of months ago. And then as the property values were certified, I shared those with you weekly updates. So even with all the craziness that's beginning, our rate's going to continue to drop, and we're still making progress towards that 69 cent debt rate. So the real numbers are good, but we have to make the kind of funny numbers here to make the real budget work and get approved. So with that, I will answer any questions you may have or ask if you approve the budget for next year.
We joke a lot about how much airtime we give you with this budget over the last four meetings, but I really do appreciate how much you educate us leading up to tonight to be able to make this decision. So thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2026 budget.
I move that we adopt the Resolution 2025-18, which is the 2026 budget.
Okay, motion by Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Megan. Any questions? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Elkins.
So the next item, bear with me, I'm going to take a trip back in time. June of 2023, the board held public hearings and took a report from myself. I think that week, I don't remember much of that week, but I'm pretty sure I reported on the need for a couple of projects. One need, the need which we still have for school bus purchases. And then, as we just shared, I think it was last month, on roofing is one example, the need, the continuous need for maintenance. And so the board approved those, and there was a whole reason why we did it prior to July 1st of that year. But nevertheless, we checked all the boxes, and then we set it on the shelf, which is perfectly allowable, happens all the time. There are some projects that approve projects.
You might want to turn this on. Approve projects that never even get to them. So as we've shared, or as I've shared with you, we still have the opportunity to actually go through and finance those projects. So the whole point, the whole part of, do we need it? What is it? Approved, that's all done. We've passed that. But now we're simply at the point where if and when we decide to actually go forward with those two projects, obviously, we have to raise the funds, which would be through the sale of bonds, most likely general obligation bonds. We could do what they call lease rental, which is a little bit different, but probably general obligation bonds. We're working in a tight window. This doesn't obligate us to do anything and only permits us to do it. But that window is, with all of the new SEA1 legislation coming on board in full force on January 1st, I'm recommending that we get as many more boxes checked as possible to give us the ability then to sell those bonds if we choose to. We'll keep an eye on the market. We'll see what rates are. There's all these other factors that we'll take into consideration. So one of those final boxes, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, is we would do a public hearing at some point for an additional appropriation, which is kind of strange, because really what we're saying is we intend to spend the money if we sell the bonds. Go figure, that's one of those things we have to do. But then the other piece of the puzzle is this thing in front of you tonight called the Final Bond Resolution. And it really is the board saying, hey, here's all of the IRS and Indiana statutory requirements that we have to include in all the documentation should we sell these bonds, and we agreed all the terms and conditions. So that's what you have in front of you. It's pretty lengthy, but those of you that have been through a bond sale before, some of that should look familiar to you. And I'll just, again, would ask for your consideration and approval. We can go ahead and do this, get it done, put it on the shelf. And then if the opportunity presents itself, if it's the right thing to do, then we'll be able to actually follow through and close out the sale and get those projects up and running. So with that, I'll be quiet and take any comments or questions.
Questions? This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the potential 2026 GO bonds.
I move that we approve the Final Bond Resolution 2025-19, potential 2026 GO bonds.
Okay, motion by Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any further questions? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Smedley.
Yes, so we're at that time of year where we're asking the principals to share their school improvement plans with the board. There have been some significant statutory changes to the school improvement plan process. They're no longer required to be submitted to the DOE. But we felt like it was still important for them to share their school improvement plans with you tonight, to have those be board-approved. We are, I'll mention this as well, we are looking for a third-party accreditation partner moving forward, even though, again, it's not required to be submitted to the state any longer. We still feel like it's important for each school to update their goals each year. So that's what we've invited the principals to do this evening. We're actually going to start off with Mr. Turner from Mount Comfort, and we'll work all the way through all six plans.
All right, we're ahead of schedule here, so I can take quite a while. Their faces just shifted. No. We had two goals, and I wanted to keep them simple because they're actually very similar to last year's goals. Start with our second one first, and that's looking at NWA growth. I utilize NWA with our teachers and our staff quite often. We find that to be very effective, and we're keeping the same goal of 65% of our students to meet or exceed their projected RIT scores from fall to spring. Last year, when we had third, fourth, and fifth grade, we hit two of the three for ELA and two of the three for math. And we feel like doing that again, the two that missed were extremely close on percentage-wise, 64.2 and 60.6, which actually led us to grow and connect with our first one, which is our focus on ILEARN. We always want that score to go up, but last year, we had the goal for five percentage points in ELA, and third, fourth, and fifth grade all hit that. So we wanted to run it back and say that if our NWA scores showed that meeting the growth, and we think that we can improve by another 5%, and hopefully, we'll see where our incoming third graders are at, but that'll put fourth grade at 45%. They were at 40 last year. We sent on some higher scores, and we're hoping that our third and fourth graders can grow by the 5% and set that line up for success again this year.
Very good, thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say to Donnie, the pig was so much better than ice cream. Ugh, we did slime our first year, and it was so gross. Anyway. So our focus last year was behavior. How do we support our students? And also our ELS and the alignment of ELS. And we met those goals, and I said that our behavioral growth is no longer a lagging indicator. Many of you have probably seen, you heard Brady last month talk about our sale initiative. I told Jack on Friday, as of today, I think it's like 128 books have been given out to students that have earned 10 de balloons, so the coins. And then they get the book. I took 15 kids today, but we were out of commission for a couple of days. We needed more books. So all of those things are helping to support that behavior in our classrooms and school. So obviously, there have been changes with ILEARN, but we need to see an increase in that. And so I wrote a goal. It's a little lofty, but it's for all of our third and fourth grade students to achieve, 55% of them to achieve proficiency on the ILEARN ELA assessment. And so we're really focusing on that, talking about cycling our ELS reteaching, and that sort of thing, and we'll monitor those with rotating data meetings. Our essential learnings, this is our goal, too, are being aligned, and our ILEARN assessment will match those alignments. We'll also continue our instructional rounds, which has been very beneficial to our teachers to see other teachers in action and provide meaningful feedback. That's all I have.
Thank you.
They'll probably come back to bite me, but I will just say for both of them, I didn't kiss a pig or do a sundae. We're having a special lunch with our kids, so that's how it's sounding, guys. We wanted to focus on a couple of different areas in our school improvement plan, like we've done in the last couple of years, trying to find ways that all of the grade levels within the building can have some sort of direct thing to monitor. We are actually very much focused on seeing some growth in our ILEARN scores, and that's a conversation we're having, not just in third and fourth grade, but even down second grade and then the first and kindergarten. But for our school improvement goals, we went with two goals that all of the grade levels would have data for and could track. The first one, we wanted to choose something related to growth for students, and we are focusing on ELA specifically and reading on NWA. So our growth goal this year is that the NWA reports give you a median growth value for an entire grade level. And we wanted our median growth value for all of our students to be the 56th percentile. We were at the 53rd percentile last year, so we felt like moving up there, that would be a significant amount of growth in one year, and something that we actually, looking at last year, had been at that level at winter. And then the end of the year wasn't quite where we wanted it. And so that was a spot we wanted to really sustain. I think we ran into some testing fatigue in the spring last year, and we're doing some other things with scheduling and also just with our instruction to try to address that. The second goal that we're doing this year is related to math, and we identified the number sense ELS, the Mount Vernon Essential Learnings, that we felt are foundational at each of the grade levels. And all of our grade levels then are committing to fully cycling those in their PLC processes, and we're looking to have 90% of all of our students be proficient in those number sense ELS. We actually grew last year, we had a very similar goal. We grew from 83% to 88%, and we wanted to continue that trajectory, and we chose the number of 90% for this coming year.
Thank you.
Okay, so year one, I think the unspoken goal here is that we're up and running and have all of our systems in place. So I told you mine would be the fastest. We, I just shared with you, we want to grow in 3% for our achievement for ILEARN in both ELA and mathematics.
Perfect, thank you. We'll give her more time next year.
Good evening. We have two goals for our school improvement plan. The first one is set by our team leaders. We've always had a goal of 100% of staff participating in instructional rounds. This year, the first round of that, we are videotaping nurture groups in different areas of the building, and so staff instructional rounds will be on watching those nurture groups, because it's been a little bit of a difficulty for us, implementing those systematically at a high level. So we will still do two instructional rounds, but one focused on nurture group. The second area of growth is, we worked this summer with Guiding Coalition to set a standard for what does mastery mean if measured by a percentage, and had some robust conversation, but came to consensus at 75%. So our goal is incredibly lofty, but it's 100% of PLC teams will ensure that 100% of students master each essential learning at a level of 75%. Our belief that all means all, and so all students deserve to master those. Again, lofty, but it's where we think we are. We anticipate having a reading goal next year, but we did not think that we were ready to implement that sort of goal this year. So we formed a literacy committee. That committee's focus is on building their own capacity in adolescent literacy during the first semester, and then continuing to build. the first semester and then continuing to build staff capacity during second semester in hopes that we will be ready to implement a reading goal for next school year and beyond.
So we looked at, we got input from our department chairs for our school improvement plan, and they got input from those teachers in their departments. We also reviewed our data from 2425. We've reviewed our 2425 school improvement plan, and then we also reviewed our strategic plan goals and our progress on those, tried to incorporate those into our school improvement Definitely continuing to work through the PLC process and instructional rounds are areas that we'll focus on to make sure that we're providing high-level programming for all of our students. But we also want to increase our SAT, math, and English scores by at least 5%, and we'll do that by focusing on our most high-leverage essential learnings and standards in our classes, making sure that students are mastering those. And we also want to provide high-level programming for our students, and we will be doing that by expanding our dual-credit courses by at least two for next year, and we hope to even exceed that and to continue to add dual-credit credential teachers to increase by at least one, and we hope to exceed that as well before the beginning of the 26, 27 school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Each year when we receive these plans and I sit down to open them up, I'm like, whoa. You guys just put so much into it, and I'm always blown away by that, so thank you. I may not always understand it and have to reread some of it twice to get it all, and I'm sure I missed a few things, but it's impressive, the amount of time that you guys put into doing this. So thank you. At this time, I will accept a motion to accept the school improvement plans.
I make a motion that we accept the school improvement plans as presented.
Okay. Motion by Stacy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan. Any further questions? All those in favor signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 4-0. Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, thank you. You'll see in your board packet, it's my favorite time of year where we get to unload some technology surplus, salvage, whatever you wish to call it. One thing to note on there, there seems to be a large amount of Chromebooks. I want you to know that these Chromebooks were ran into the ground. Generally speaking, a Chromebook's lifespan is about four years. We've took these and some of its friends into year seven and eight, so these are truly dead, no longer useful Chromebooks. Thank you.
Thank you. Your list gets a little bit smaller every year, though. Like, you've done a good job, so. I'll entertain a motion to accept the technology surplus salvage.
I'll make a motion to accept the technology surplus.
Have a motion by?
Yes, surplus.
Motion by Stacy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. Any questions for her, Seth? Okay. All in favor signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, we'll move on to our board member reports. Fortville RDC, Stacy?
The Fortville RDC did meet. Their main topic of discussion was improvements that they have requested support from the RDC for Landmark Park.
Very good. Kelly Freeman with Cumberland RDC.
Cumberland did not meet this last month, or this month, whichever one it was, last month, yeah. This month's still coming, so.
Mr. Gray's not with us tonight. He represents our Hancock County RDC. McCordsville RDC, I have that meeting tomorrow night. Megan with the Education Foundation.
I did not attend last month. I was at a lovely dinner with some people here, and it was great, but they do meet in two weeks from tonight, and I will be there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Dr. Parker, do you have any further announcements for us this month?
I think fall break's next week. Is that right, guys? Look at their faces.
They're all breathing again. There's some smiles.
Yes. So we've had a great first quarter and ready for fall break.
I can't believe we're already saying that, really, though. It's gone so fast, so. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Megan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. I'm guessing no further questions? Okay. All those in favor signal by raising your right hand. Meeting adjourned at 7:35 PM. Thank you, guys.
Somebody said she did. Wow. No, I want to stay. Can I say that? I like to stay. Can I say that?